This is one of our regular meetings. So we need to have the pledge to the flag. I'm going to give Kathy that and the roll call.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
President.
Stransky.
Yes.
Strong.
Here.
Mayor Strong, sorry. Rodriguez.
President, it's a little hard to hear tonight for some reason.
Okay, sorry, I'll move up.
Okay, we have a roll call and this moment in our agenda where we can hear from the public any comments that are not on the posted agenda, but anything that is within the city's jurisdiction. And you have a maximum of three minutes to address us on whatever else we'd like to talk about that's not on our agenda. Anybody in the public out there who would like to just speak to us? Does it look like I better close my door? I'm getting something. That might be why it was hard to hear because my housemate is visiting with somebody. So, Public Matters, there aren't any on our agenda this evening, and enactment of ordinances similarly. Consent calendar, we do not have any items tonight. We do have in our packet, there were monthly activity reports regarding business license activity, but unless there is a comment about that, we just take that into our knowledge. Going on, commissions, agencies, and authorities, we are not meeting under any other authority than City Council tonight. So now we're moving directly to our City Manager reports and recommendations. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, I would like just to bring up the date, more or less for the benefit of the public as well, because I know there's been some communication from myself and Andy regarding the American Rescue Plan Act and how that impacts the city. So once again, we're looking at if federal assistance is due to approximately $920,000. It is earmarked for about four large categories. The city can allocate that for assistance to public and nonprofit groups for any losses or delayed activities they experienced due to COVID. We can also help to offset losses of loss of wages to essential workers up to a certain amount as well. We can cover for lost revenue that the city incurred throughout the COVID period, which is still ongoing. And then most interestingly, we can allocate for projects. And it's very clear, the language in the act designate water sewer and broadband technology, infrastructure improvements. I had a conversation with Andy, Andy Heath, Finance Assistant, today, Finance Director, and basically we're looking at codifying this amount into the 21, 22 budget as revenue. And then as the time proceeds, we can look at identifying projects and earmark funds for those projects through this funding. So there's going to be some budget work that's going to need to be take place on this front, but I think Andy and I have a good handle what needs to be done. And I think what we're going to need to do is, in time, probably have a couple sessions with the council. If you have projects or identified needs that fits into the category of the act, we probably want to identify those and put them down on paper so we can explore them. The funding is in place to December 31st of 2024. So we have some time, but you know, as we all recognize, time seems to go by quickly when we're considering things. Questions, comments?
We don't have to specify in advance to get the spending. They'll just hand it over and then we have to account for it. Is that right?
Essentially, yes. Since we're a non-entitlement city, so there's a slightly different protocol. The Treasury Department at the federal level is still working, in our case, with Sacramento on how it's going to go to the smaller communities. But we should be receiving either a notice of how the allocation is going to take place or the sections. There may be, it may be split into at least two distributions. That's what we know of right now. There has been very little information released by either California League of Cities or any other entity on this process the last week.
Okay. Other council members have any questions about this? I don't see any or hear any that you're welcome to. If you have, this is your opportunity. I guess we'll go on to the second item, 2021 goal setting update.
Once again, this is really real brief. I just want to make an announcement to the public that the survey is online. We are getting activity on that. We get some good comments. Been working with Bob World on our next session, which is scheduled for April 7th. There's going to be some correspondence that Bob and I are going to be producing and getting it to the council members in advance of April 7th to be prepared to start ranking and categorizing those goals that he had identified last Saturday. So just wanted to make that known and that we're still continuing. And once again, I appreciate the effort that the council and staff has put into this process.
That was very brief. Any, any questions or clarifications from anybody? All right. And that's it for verbal reports. You don't have any other items that you want to inform us?
I have nothing else at this time.
Okay. So let's go to item nine. Was there any public questions? Apparently not. Item nine, A, tree assessment at Babcock Park. Of course, that's explained quite well in the staff report, but let's hear from Kenan O'Shea about his recommendation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Kenan O'Shea, Public Works Superintendent. We're here to talk about the tree assessment at Babcock Park. In the fall of 2018, one of Babcock Park's giant sequoia redwood trees began to exhibit signs of failing health and distress. The top crown of the tree and the tips lost their foliage and discolored. After a thorough evaluation by a certified arborist and registered forester, the council received a report advising them of the situation last year. I believe you guys have that all in the, in the packet that was provided. At that time, no action or formal decision was made, and I'm returning to you now to present the recommendation made by the Public Works Department after further review and research by the City Manager and legal advisor. We have renewed and filed the necessary permits from obtained competitive quotes for the cost of capable contractors that can meet the insurance requirements for the project. And now we're looking to move forward. At the request of the council, to do some public outreach in the matter, the Public Works Department composed a survey and posted it on social media platforms and the city's website to help determine the community's opinion of the status of the tree. I'd like to thank the Community Development Department for opening that. The survey ran for about 30 days, and it consisted of eight short questions, and it was taken by a total of 168 people. The results are attached, but 52.38% were in strong support of the tree's removal for public safety, and only about 11.31% were strongly opposed. Several tree care experts were contracted, were contacted to explore other options such as surgery and soil treatment. These procedures are costly and rarely effective for a tree that's far in decline. The survey results also showed that planting new appropriate species of trees and milling the logs can maneuver into lumber for benches and tables, a popular option, for repurposing of the timber if it is found to be inadequate condition. Although the survey indicated 51.23% of the people polled supported leaving, supported leaving the tree standing and having it carved, staff has determined that it would be best to fully remove the tree and donate some of the logs to the Willett Center for the Arts for future art installations when appropriate. The Public Works Department, after considering all options and taking into account the survey results, supports the removal of the tree. The arborist report substantiates the verdict as the tree is a hazard to public safety and a known liability to the city. The department will replant trees in the park, donate some logs to various nonprofits, and have the remaining timber milled for lumber to build benches and tables for the park and other facilities. We were a little bit concerned about leaving the tree standing and having it carved in place. That was kind of an idea that we wanted to include because it was something that was being thrown around by a lot of the public. But we were just concerned that the timber being left for the dying root system is kind of, you know, a potential problem for upkeep and maintenance issues moving forward. So we figured that maybe if we could donate the logs to some nonprofit organizations that they could, you know, potentially have projects that they plan and then maybe bring before the council when it's appropriate. At this time, the Public Works, you know, after considering all options and taking into account the survey results, we support the removal of the tree. The arborist report substantiates the verdict as the tree is a hazard to public safety and a known liability to the city. The department will replant trees in the park, donate some logs to various nonprofits, and have the remaining timber milled for lumber to build benches and tables for the park and other facilities. So our, you know, to sum it up, our recommended action is to remove the tree, and the work will be assigned to the lowest bidder with the Public Works assisting with traffic control and hauling the logs. We're probably going to try to leave some of the chips on site to protect the exposed root base of the other trees that are still there and try to keep them healthy moving forward.
Thank you.
The alternative, the alternatives, I'm sorry, would be surgery and soil treatments in an attempt to save the tree or buy time, but the general opinion is that this would have limited success at this point, if any at all. Finding contractors to perform this procedure has proven difficult. I called several experts out of the Santa Rosa and Sonoma County area, and we didn't, we didn't really have much progress in that department. So the other option, I guess, would be to remove the dead limbs, tips, and the top portion. And that's, you know, also an extensive process that may cost as much or as more as the removal and definitely wouldn't guarantee the tree to recover. So that's kind of where I'm at with it, and I'll remain on the line for questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Kenan. All right. Any questions, clarifying questions from the council before we open the public hearing?
Yes, this is Larry. I have a couple of questions. I think that it's a good thing that we saw the tree, but I have a couple of questions after that. How much is it going to cost us to mill the cans out of the tree?
Well, at this point, we have a small milling operation out in the valley. It's a kind of a local, a local option that he's, for bigger, bigger stuff. And we were thinking that if we could donate a few logs to him and have him, have him mill, mill the stuff up for us, you know, that we could maybe work something out in that respect. But we're not looking at trying to, he's even offered to do some, some donation on the milling for us as well, just to see something happen. He built benches and tables for a living, so he sells them and markets them, but we would want to make sure that whatever he, whatever he gets, he mills up for us and that we decide if we're going to donate some or, with Cal Fire permits for harvesting. You can't sell or trade or barter, so we have to be real specific with, with the verbiage on that.
Does that answer? Excuse me. I have a couple of questions. One of them, is that going to be 50/50 for him to make the cans out of the logs?
At this point, we haven't entered to any agreement yet. I just kind of reached out to him to see if he was willing to do it, and he offered to make a donation of his time because he does support the community. He's done a lot of the redwood work that you see down at the fairgrounds. And right now, we don't have any, any contract in place with him at this point. We would have to negotiate that. And like I said, it's, we would have to donate it, you know, and decide how much of it we want even. First, we have to take the tree down and see what the wood is like because as, as the arborist report indicates, there's some, some bugs and there's, you know, the potential for some rot. And until we start cutting into it, we're not going to see how much of the timber is even usable, you know? So we have to kind of just approach that as we, as we cut the tree down and figure out what's going on in there and between the bark and the cambium layers. And there could be a lot of damage, so we're just going to, we're going to wait and see what happens with that. And then, but we're going to take the logs and we're going to store them at the Public Works yard. And then we'll, we'll disperse them as the council, you know, approves or see bid.
Okay. My second question is, and you, I think you answered it, are you going to take it to the Public Works yard and store it, the portion that we get?
Absolutely. We've already got a spot kind of cleared, and we're kind of prepping for that event.
Okay. And, and you realize, I read your report several times to get the actual cause of it, but you know that the city of Willett is actually the one that caused us to start going because we put stratum slice in it another years ago and ran mills for too much, nonstop.
Yeah, that's, that is one of the, definitely one of the concerns, and I'm sure a contributing factor. And you've seen yourself, Larry, as a council member, Stransky, of the conduit's been grown into the bark on several of those trees, and someone ran power up there at some point. The trees just literally grew around the conduit and outranked some of the wires on the tree, and I'm sure that probably hasn't, hasn't helped.
Okay. When, when we get ready to store that, I want you to call me and I want to come and check it. Thank you. Thank you. That's the end of my question.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Stransky. Any other council members have questions? Yes, Jerry?
Kenan, when they, go ahead and they cut the tree down, like Larry, I, I agree that you should probably do what was public. Is it going to be, I guess, well, I saw the other trees that are still left in the park. Is there any, I guess, concern that root systems of those trees will be damaged at all? This one or any concern there?
As far as removing this tree and having that affect the other trees, unless we go in and do some invasive root grinding or something on the stump and get, get too carried away, I don't think it should be a problem. That wasn't really mentioned in the arborist report as far as, you know, considerations for the health of the, of the other trees. The concern is the health of the other trees moving forward, definitely. Now, the, the problem that's affecting that tree hopefully doesn't, you know, continue to be a problem for these other, these other trees in the park as well. Like I said, we're going to try to put some, some bark cover over the top of the roots and, you know, try to discourage people from walking right over the tops of them. But all the trees, you know, they have a lifespan, and it may just be that we're coming to an end in climate change and things, other factors, long, dry, hot seasons, you know, cold, wet winters. Those trees are typically seen more in like the valley region, you know, Sequoia National Forest, that's a lot warmer and a lot less wet down that way. So it could just be a lifespan thing that's kind of coming to an end. Everything does have a cycle in that way, you know?
The other thing is, will you guys be doing the removal of the electric conduit? Or is that part of the contract?
Well, the conduit that's embedded in the bark, that's just going to be, we'll try to leave that in the butt log and all that away as one piece so that it doesn't end up in multiple sections. As far as the, we're going to probably have to de-energize that power box that supplies, that used to supply the lights, that supplies the fountain, and that also supplies electric timers for the irrigation. So we might have to do some remodel work to that little, to that box after the tree's removed. There's going to be a big, big empty spot, you know, and we'll have to do something there that's a little more presentable now, but once that tree's gone, it's really going to, going to expose the fountain and bring a lot more light into the grass on the park. So we'll have to, we'll have to look at this as the first step, and maybe some, some major improvements and developments at that park. We could all probably agree that we moved it.
It looked like the soil was still pretty wet there when I was there today. It's maybe a help right out.
Yeah, just speak, speak up more. We can just barely hear you.
Oh, okay. It looked like the soil was still pretty wet even today, and I didn't see the bugs in the tree, but I, it's, the soil was still wet. So maybe with that tree gone, maybe it'll help the other ones to come right out. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, that's, that is what we're hoping for, sir.
Any other questions before I open the hearing? Yes, go ahead, Tiberian.
Sorry, unfortunately, I don't have enough internet to get my face up on the screen there. So Kenan, I have a couple of questions. Did you get a bid or an estimate of how much did we cost for root excavation?
I tried. I called several, several places that offer those services, and we were either out of their service area or they just weren't, weren't available to come and perform the, the service. I, I only found like two, two places that could potentially offer that out of the Santa Rosa area. I looked around in the humble area, and I didn't find anybody that could, no one that could guarantee that that would even be of help. So I sent, I sent some pictures out. I kind of tried to do some networking with some people, and I didn't really make a lot of headway. According to the arborist report and, and after talking to the arborist and the forester again, and a couple of other arborists, a few of, most of the tree companies that I was getting bids for have arborists, and I asked them each one individually as they, you know, as I met with them to look at the tree and get a quote started. And, and they all kind of agreed that, that that wasn't really something that they really would recommend or even pursue. And I asked them if, you know, rimming it, you know, topping it was a possibility. And, you know, they, they said that that tree's pretty much on its way out, you know, a year ago. So it's only gotten worse over the last, you know, the last few months.
And then how much, did you get any kind of estimate if we were just to remove the, the dying limbs? Do we have any idea of what, if we were just a portion of it, what it would cost?
At that point, after talking to the, the people that I talked to, I didn't really see that as, as a very effective way to prevent any further damage. The determination was kind of made that the tree needed to be removed and that we could throw some money at it if we wanted, but it wouldn't really change the outcome.
Okay. And then if we decided to remove the tree, when would a replacement tree be available? And what size or species do you think would be selected? And what would be the, the cost for the replacement tree?
Well, I can't make any promises for other departments, but I know that we did plant 20 trees out of what I, what I'm told will be the first installation of several through the Cal Fire Grant that the Community Development Department put together. And I'm hoping, because basically we get to identify locations, and the parks are a prime spot. So we were hoping to utilize some trees from that grant the next time we get an installment. I haven't, I haven't really verified when that would be. If necessary, we could certainly probably purchase a tree from a nursery to plant if, if there needed to be like a ceremony or something to make the community feel better about seeing something go in sooner than later. I just didn't want to rush the, the plan for redevelopment of the park. I'm trying to use this sort of as a catalyst to, to get us going on, on a bigger picture. And I, I'd like to plant some, you know, in a couple of locations there at the parks, but I want to be real careful and make sure we put something that's going to, it's going to be there for, for the duration, you know?
Okay.
If I may just jump in as well, just to, you know, repeat the comments that Mr. O'Shea said, that him and I toured the park the other day, and we were just looking at, it definitely needs improvements beyond the, the tree and the landscaping out there. So the fountain, the lighting, the veterans memorial, that we're, we're potentially looking at the tree removal, as, as Kenan said, as a catalyst for other improvements up there. We would like to make a wish list of improvements, both fixed and also some secondary items, and then potentially put them in the budget for next year and, and carry out the plan. So we wanted to bring new life to that park and re-energize it, revitalize it with some investment, and I think this is a great brand opportunity.
I like, I like that idea, and so I appreciate that information. But I'm kind of wondering if it's possible to time new trees going in and need improvements around the time that the other tree would be out because this tree's kind of been an iconic part of Willett, and I would hate to see this, this kind of like empty space that, you know, sometimes we mean to make things happen sooner than later, and I wouldn't want to see it here pass by two years and we haven't really done the upgrades. So I was kind of hoping for some information about how we might be able to, to tie the removal and the replacement or upgrades around the same time. The last question I have is, in the arborist report, it talks about one of the reasons that the tree has failed, aside from what had been mentioned before, was overwatering. And I know that we have several trees throughout our community. We have, there's been lots of conversation about the city parks as well as Red Grove. And are we addressing this overwatering issue at the other parks to ensure that we don't have this kind of problem in other areas?
We definitely, we dive back our, our watering in general on a, on a pretty large scale based on the, the fact that California still remains in a drought situation. So we've been, we've been really careful, especially with the, with the facilities like Babcock Park and other, other facilities that are on the distribution system. So the, you know, everything at the Red Grove, Ball Field, and everything down there is all on the Agwell Water, whereas everything at Snyder Park, Babcock, Hill Creek, and these other facilities, that's on the distribution system. So that takes out of the drinking water pool. It's very vital for us to get ourselves through the dry months. And that combined with the fires and everything else, it just, it hasn't really helped. But we, the challenge with trees that are planted on an irrigated lawn like that, that are watered individually, now that new trees at Snyder Park, those are all on individual watering for the trees themselves. So we can give the trees the water they need and then get the lawn watering on a, on a broadcast. And we have, you know, that, we did that irrigation as part of a major parks project. So that's new and that's been upgraded. So that, that issue isn't really as prevalent there at Snyder as it was in the past. And then at the Red Grove, you know, you've got those oak trees with very shallow roots in the, in the, in the irrigated lawn and not, not the best drainage. So they don't have to work very hard and they don't have to grow very deep. But we water the, we water the lawns as, basically as little as we can get away with and so do green just to try to keep the drinking water cool as bad as we can.
Any other council member questions before I open the hearing? I do want to mention that although I like the idea of replacing something at the, at the same time or very close to the time that we're taking out such an iconic tree, I think that would not be the best time to plant a new tree. We probably want to do that right before the rainy season rather than right before summer or so. I do think there's some urgency to the fact that this tree is a hazard now. So that's just a editorial comment from me. Let's open the public hearing if there's anyone else who wants to address us on this issue. And I'm not hearing anybody. And so we'll bring it back up to the council, and would anyone like to make a motion?
I would like, I would like to make a motion to do the, do the, what I'm trying to say, do what the Public Works thinks is, is very best.
Staff recommendation. Okay, moved by Stransky and seconded by Jerry Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Kathy, would you call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Counselmember. Reluctantly, yes. Kathy.
Thank you.
For the record, my answer is yes, but, but I would ask that City Manager bring forward a future project that would indicate when we would see some replacement in the park for communication to the public.
Thank you. Mary Strong.
Yes. Okay, that passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mary Strong.
Yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. It's a direction to staff for some future planning. And we're moving now to item 9B, scheduling and scope of the Blosser Lane Rehabilitation Project being presented by Rod Wilburn. Go ahead.
Mayor Strong, esteemed council members. This discussion and popular action is to direct staff to proceed with plans for the Blosser Lane Rehabilitation Project. The recommended action is to eliminate the proposed bike lanes and continue with the preparation of plans and specifications for the project to be constructed next year, given the timing, since we're almost in April. So, we brought this to council on February 10th and presented the conceptual plans, looking for direction on some of the design issues associated with the project, with the Highway 20 intersection. And the most significant issue that came up was the inclusion or exclusion of the bike lanes. At that time, you know, it was pointed out that the constraints, the physical constraints to the north and the south of this section of Blosser Lane would make it unlikely, if not impossible, to extend bike lanes to the north along coast or to the south along Meadow Brook into the county. So, after that, staff was directed to get some public input, speak with school officials, to bring back more information regarding the bike lanes. And they contacted the school district superintendent who was, he shared the same concerns about the bike lane, but he was of greater concern. His bigger concern was the Highway 20 intersection and some improvements to the safety along Highway 20 for pedestrians on foot. And that is actually part of this plan. So, along with that, Jeremy and Andrea put out a survey to get public input and the reporting responses, of those responses, 25 were in favor. 15, 25 were not in favor of bike lanes, excuse me, and 15 were in favor. And 17 of those people used Blosser Lane more than five times a week. And of those 17, 12 of them were not in favor of bike lanes. So, it appears that at the small sample size, there's not wide support for bike lanes and staff recommendation is to eliminate them from the project. So, with that in mind, the other project that's going to parallel take place since this one won't happen next year is a drainage project that's currently being worked on for West Mendocino, which is the top road priority on the current list. And the drainage improvement would be to support a road improvement project in the next year or two, depending upon the capital improvement project schedule. The alternative is to leave the bike lanes in and the project schedule would still be, probably, given the timing, this would still be for construction for next year. So, that really, that sums it up.
Okay. Thank you very much, Rod. Any clarifying questions from the council members? Jerry?
A question for Rod. I'm assuming you, you know, best, I guess I feel the same way about the bike lane. If you're not going to connect up and it's going to cause us some issue, maybe put our money elsewhere as much as I think that, I prefer probably to want bike lanes. My question is that if for some reason money came in or became available to do the Highway 20 and all of a sudden you could connect up bike lanes, how expensive would it be to come back and put in bike lanes a couple of years down the road? That's my question.
Okay. I don't know that it wouldn't be, you see the estimate of $50,000 to $70,000. There would be some restriping. It would be more than that likely to construct bike lanes, to widen, make whatever adjustments necessary. But the physical constraints, even if bikes can get across Highway 20, Coast Street, just the limited width, not even just right of way width, but the physical, the hill there that goes up Raymond and Mill Street and then down South Coast, it just doesn't, it doesn't fit without some major changes to the topography. So.
Thank you. Okay, that was the end of your comment, Jerry. Any other questions from the council members? Any questions or comments from the public? The hearing is now open. I'm hearing none and seeing none. So, I guess we have, we're ready to entertain a motion unless someone wants to... Okay, Greta.
I just wanted to make a comment. I'm, I understand the need to delay this project until next year. I'm fine with that. I understand the desire to save the money and the concerns of the school district to not encourage cycling in that area, especially with the proximity to the very dangerous intersection of Highway 20. But as I have mentioned before, and I think I have to stay consistent to my brand here, I find it discouraging that we're not including bicycle lanes. I wouldn't necessarily expect there to be connector lanes in all of the neighborhoods, but on some of the larger streets, I think they're important. And it's important to signal to both vehicles and cyclists that our roads are for everyone, for all modes of transportation and not just for cars. So, I get it. I get the concerns. You got the 25 people who said no to bike lanes, but I just need to voice my frustration and my steady belief that bike lanes matter and we should have more of them.
Madam Mayor, may I respond to that?
Please do.
So, we agree at the staff level with those comments. What we would like to do is implement or adopt a street policy that puts criteria in place that when we are doing project design and scoping, that there is some type of imperial checklist that we're, you know, making sure that this is the right fit for bike lanes and other improvements at that location. We have limited financial resources on these street projects and we want to make wise use. But if we kind of remove it as it, remove it from staff, judgment call on the, if we make it more that, you know, ticked all the boxes, only take 75% of the boxes and that's why it's coming for the council in that direction. So, we hear you. We're getting there and just bear with us.
Thank you. And just to be clear, I did not mean my comments in any way to be critical of staff. I know that you all are working to give us the best streets possible. I just want to make that point that I want us moving in the bike lane direction. So, thank you for hearing me.
That, it wasn't my, I didn't want to be negative in my response of this. Setting the tone that we hear you. It's loud and clear. We have our guidance and we'll make it out.
Right. Yes, Jerry?
I'd like some staff recommendations.
I'll second it. This is Larry.
All right, it's been moved and seconded and I think we are ready for a vote. Kathy.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mary Strong.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, on that one. And we are now moving to item 10, the department monthly reports, which I did tell Brian earlier yesterday that I thought it was really wonderful to get these reports. And I'm sure everybody has been enjoying getting the update from all of the departments. It's kind of the nitty gritty that we don't always get an overview of and I really appreciated it and I appreciate the work that the staff has done to bring that to us. That being said, I wasn't sure whether we were going to also have an oral report from each department or depend on those written reports. So, Brian, what's your thought?
Yes, you know, it's still, like you have identified, it's the first opportunity that we've been able to provide this level of efficiency to the council and the general public. It's still kind of a work in progress. What the vision here is that basically you would go down the list and ask if any council members have a specific question on an item that was identified or listed on the report. If not, a staff member may voluntarily, you know, provide additional information if they feel necessary to explain the circumstance or situation. Otherwise, which is like I said, we'll go down the list and go from there.
Okay, all right. So, let's just do exactly that. Any, well, first of all, any other comments in general about the fact that we now have this once a month report system?
This is Larry. I think that the written reports are really nice and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. And the first one on the list here is the airport. Any questions or comments from the council members? Hearing none. I'm not going to, you know, if you have a comment, please just pipe up because I don't want to... And then, the second one is community development. Any questions of Dusty Dooley on that one? I'm just going to comment that I think you have an awful lot on your plate and it's good to see it all written out and it's going to be even better when we dive in and get some of those things done. So, thank you.
Yeah, Seth went off script there. He had a really, you know, threw a lot on, outside all of us, but we'll kind of work out the case a little bit here and get it more in balance.
Okay. Some of those are obviously, you know, not a one month either passed for the next month.
You can tell who's an engineer, who's a planner.
Any questions on engineering? Or Dusty, did you have any comment that you wanted down or not?
Yeah, I think, thank you, Mayor Dusty Dooley, community development director. I do have an important update to provide since the authoring of the report and it relates to the community development block grant application that we're seeking to put forward to HCD. We were very close to hitting the send button on our application as directed by council at a previous meeting. However, HCD once again gave us, from our perspective, another curve ball. Staff felt that we had deliberately asked HCD if it was a requirement or an issue for us to include or acknowledge the fact that we had leftover program income funds from previous long, long, long time ago, housing rehab and commercial rehab programs through HCD. We have somewhere between, you know, around $180,000, $190,000 in leftover funds that were part of those previous revolving accounts. HCD has provided us with updated direction that we do need to include those program income funds and add them to our current application for the revolving business loan program that we're hoping to initiate here. So, it's, the positive side of it is we've had this money in our account that's been essentially frozen and we've been anxious to work with HCD to figure out how to make use of it to benefit our community. The bad news is it's requiring us to amend the application and we'll need to come back in front of council for a revised resolution to include with our application and we will be doing that in an upcoming council meeting. And, you know, the reason again is that we received new direction from HCD that we need to include these approximately $180,000, $190,000 existing program income funds and add it to our application for the additional TB2, TB3 funding. So, in total, we were already looking at receiving somewhere between $281,358,000 to fund the business loan revolving program. The range is, we're getting different answers depending on who we talk to as to how much money can carry over from the round one of CDBG COVID funding. And then, we're now looking at adding approximately $180,000, $190,000 of our existing program income fund to include with that application. So, in total, we might be looking at just under $550,000 in CDBG funds to support this business loan program. So, you know, we're still hashing out some of the details, but I wanted to make the council aware of this new information provided to HCD and acknowledge that staff is once again adapting to the situation and doing our best to dip our toes in the CDBG world. And, you know, again, this is just another example of, I think, why other communities, other consultants, other staff, you know, warned us that this is a, one of the harder, if not the hardest, programs to navigate. So, I'm not going to say that we're surprised, but I'm also not discouraged. And I'm turning that, I'm thinking this is a good thing. You know, it's an opportunity to unfreeze these unused funds and make good use of them, you know. So, anyway, that's what I wanted to share with council. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions about that? Yes, Greta.
I'm just wondering if it would be appropriate for the council to consider writing a letter to maybe Assemblyman Jim Wood or even Senator McGuire to let them know how difficult this, the CDBG fund program is for small rural communities. I feel like this is a pretty constant refrain, Dusty, to hear, you know, how difficult the toe dipping actually is. And the money is there. It's provided by the state ostensibly to help and yet the roadblocks created to make it available are such that it often deters small cities from actually even trying for these funds. So, maybe we need to use our voices to speak up to our state representatives and have them, you know, shake some cages and see if they can't make this even just a modicum easier.
Any response to that, Seth?
Yes, this is Larry. I think that's a really good idea. It's something that's a long time coming.
Mayor, may I respond with a comment as well?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Dusty.
Yeah, so I understand that desire and, you know, a couple of thoughts come to mind. You know, one, I think jurisdictions like ours have been writing those letters and making our voices heard for a number of years and it's very much on the radar of our political representatives. And my understanding is that there's been a significant effort to streamline and make the process transparent and easy enough that small jurisdictions like ours and others aren't discouraged from seeking funding or, you know, aren't getting inconsistent or bad direction. Uh, my other thought is, can we write the letter after we get the funding? That was awesome.
Uh, League of Cities might, might, uh, go to bat for us on this because it's a lot of cities involved, so, uh, and some of them are bigger and have way more, uh, staff to tackle these, our nuts, but, um, yeah. I agree with like your last comment, Dusty. But, yeah, I don't think it would hurt to, to contact our representatives either. I, I guess I wanted to also ask, are we not up against a deadline that we're, um, we're, we're going to be okay when this comes back to us for this occasion? Or is, okay?
Um, it, we, we are going to be okay because you have a staff that's dedicated to get this, getting this matter in front of you, but it, it does tighten up the timeline for sure. Uh, like I said, we were literally at the date where we were going to hit the send button when we got the revised information from HCD staff. Uh, HCD staff was, um, you know, they, they understand the situation. Uh, we weren't shy about explaining, um, the fact that this seemed to be inconsistent with past directions. Um, and, um, they're looking to talk with some of their senior staff to see what flexibility they might be able to provide us should we need it. But this point in time, I, I do believe that we'll work out the details and get a revised resolution in front of, in front of the council, um, and provide, you know, uh, our, our revised, uh, direction meets the satisfaction of council at that meeting, we should be good. But, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dusty. Uh, moving on, any, uh, questions of the engineering report or the staff? And Police Department. Do we have our Chief Lizaraga? Are you on here? Don't see him.
He had excellent broader engagement with Rotary tonight, so, uh.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I'm not hearing any questions, so we'll move on to Public Works. Any questions? And Utilities. I think that the reports were very explanatory and so that's partly why, partly why we're not having too many questions because it's really good, good information there. So, uh, any other comments from the public? Uh, yes, Greta, do you have something?
Um, I just wanted to, um, say, say thank you to staff. These reports are fantastic. It's great to get the nitty gritty and, um, you folks are busy. I mean, we knew that, but holy cow, thank you.
Jerry?
My thoughts for Brian is, at least, once I know that they get posted, uh, with our agendas, but is this something that we could put on our, our website so that folks can see them per department or one spot, uh, as a document so that they'll look at?
So, yeah, I think we're, like I said, uh, we're, we're, we want to maximize our, uh, presence in the community by releasing this information. Uh, right now, it's part of the packet that's posted. Uh, I think we can separate them out and put them on the website as well as kind of monthly update. Uh, like I mentioned before, my goal is to craft these and the reports that I compose for the benefit of the council, uh, into a newsletter type document that can even have a greater distribution. So, uh, like I said, we're making some changes here, uh, we're working hard and doing the best we can so we want to provide service to the council and the public.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I had, um, mentioned this to somebody, um, one of the constituents, and they also thought it would be nice to have it placed on the website, uh, so that those who didn't know to like look in the packet from this, uh, particular agenda packet, that there would be some kind of way to find this on the website. So, uh, going forward, if you can accommodate that, that would be great.
Noted, and will be accomplished.
And I think I mentioned also to Brian that the, um, mayor's report that I did about three weeks ago on video, the 20-minute video, um, if it's okay with council members for that, it's probably going to be something I do quarterly, um, unless I find that there's a need to do it more often than that. But, um, somebody, I think Greta mentioned in, in our, um, one of our sessions recently that it'd be nice to have periodic reports from the mayor, and I think it's even in our protocols and, uh, but we'd never have done it. So if there's no objection, I think that could be a link on the website as well. Greta?
Um, there wasn't really any guidance in the, um, the Procedures and Protocols Manual about that mayor's report, but, um, I wonder if you wouldn't consider, um, having council input on your reports? I mean, if it's something that's coming from the council, ideally, it should have the buy-in of all five of us.
That's, I think that's a great idea. I, I didn't, um, yeah, I, I think it's, I don't usually write out everything I'm going to say. I just, I sort of have an outline and then do it somewhat ad lib to make it a little more interesting than just reading. But I could, uh, I could certainly share an outline and, um, make sure that the council has an opportunity to add things or say, boy, maybe we're not ready to go public. I don't know. And I'd be happy to do that going forward.
Any other council members have thoughts on that?
I thought that was a good suggestion. Thank you, Madge, for viewing this.
Is there any concern about the one, I don't know if you all had a chance to, um, to actually watch the 20-minute one that I did three weeks ago or so? I, I know that the two sort of semi, um, controversial issues that I brought up on there, one was, um, mentioning the groundwater, um, study and the fact that that is, that the staff is continuing to work on that to respond to some of the kind of comments that came up, so it wasn't, um, you know, it wasn't a done deal yet, the ground, the new groundwater well. Um, and I mentioned the fact that probably most everybody already knew that the county's, um, wanting to use the old powered hospital for a pup unit was not, um, coming to fruition because the private developer has already made that, you know, that, that went into escrow. So there, there wasn't really anything controversial. I was just updating people about those items. And I also mentioned that we are advertising for a, a permanent police chief and that, um, we're happy to have Chief Lizaraga as our interim in the meantime. So if, if anyone had any concern about it, then, um, it's just a report from me personally, as mayor, not on behalf of the whole council. But I, I don't think there was anything there that would be, um, uh, objectionable. If anybody has an opinion about that, now's the time.
I didn't see the, the video, Madge. I think that the only request that I would have is to, to give you a report, um, even though it says the mayor's report, there could be some perception from the community about whether as, when you're speaking as mayor, whether or not you're representing the whole. So I think giving out information is great. Just be mindful of, uh, when you, you're giving an opinion in that particular piece so that, um, it's, it's, or maybe even say, this is my opinion, um, if you're stating your opinion so that, uh, it's just easy for people to discern whether this is the mayor's opinion or this is the consent of the council. That's all I would ask.
I actually don't think I gave any opinions, the, the amount that I recall, but it is sometimes hard to be objective, uh, when you're talking, uh, you know, not to have an opinion sort of seep in there. I don't think I did give any opinions. I, I was trying to really just update information and what would, and I was particularly wanting to get it out there in time for people to know that we were going through this priority setting process and that we welcomed, uh, community input on that. So, um.
And that, I don't, I'm not saying I even object to if opinion comes into play every now and then, just being mindful that when you give an opinion, that you also explain that, that this is yours, not necessarily the council's.
That's all. Absolutely. I totally agree with that. Okay, well, um, I don't hear anyone, but if, if you listen to the 20-minute report and, and have any doubts whatsoever, let Brian know and then, um, but otherwise, I would request that that be provided as a link, um, on the, on the city's website. So maybe you can give it a week if you want to get back to Brian. Okay, now we are at item 11, which is City Council Announcements, Communications, and Reports. I wanted to just, I guess, report that, um, following our most recent special meetings that we've been having, um, one thing that came up, I'm hoping that Greta might be willing to, um, do some kind of, um, for Greta and, and Suprina perhaps together, just, uh, very brief guidelines for using social media, something like what Suprina was just saying, you know, guidelines for if you're going to give an opinion, make sure it's only your own and not on behalf of the whole city, or making sure that you don't, um, do a like or a forward unless, um, you know, that, that tends to be viewed as giving an opinion, like it tends to be, um, saying you agree with something. There was a demo that went out a couple of weeks ago, um, that Brian sent everybody about some of the recent interpretations of, of what's okay and not okay on, um, Brown Act compliance with use of, of social media. And I was just sort of hoping for a very simple, at most one-page thing that would give some guidelines for that. Is that something that, um, either Greta or Suprina or maybe together are willing to, um, take a crack at?
This is Suprina. I was just quickly, uh, Googling on, uh, League of Californian Cities because I hate to tap something if there's already something, and I see that there is, uh, in reference to Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn, YouTube, uh, they do have guidelines, so I would feel more comfortable maybe having Jim present something that's already, or the city manager present something that's already a widely used, uh, policy rather than trying to tap something all of our own.
Does sound like a good idea. Uh, so I think, Brian, you can like check with Jim about that? Is Jim on the line here? Don't see him.
Yes, I am on the line, and I'd be happy to work with, uh, Brian. I, I think it does make a lot, a lot of sense not to reinvent the wheel on this and to use some of the good resources that might be available with the.
Okay.
We can certainly, we can certainly adapt it if it's necessary for our own use. And if we could go back just a moment, um, regarding the mayor's, uh, suggestions that the, um, quarterly videos that he is planning to prepare beyond the, uh, city's, uh, official website. I, I, I know that I've read in past years that one concern about that is, like in an election year, for example, if the mayor is up for reelection and, and has this public resource, this city's, uh, resource available to her that other candidates do not have, that that would be, uh, an election code violation and, um, and something we want to avoid. So I'd like to look into that issue a little more, um, closely and, and see whether that is something that is a good idea or not.
That's a good point. I was also thinking that, oh, with somebody else wanting to say something? I heard, no. That I wanted to look into what's available from League of Cities on, um, the, the question that came up about doing more of a rotation approach instead of a, a just sort of free-for-all every year with the mayoral, uh, election. So I, I wanted to look into that and, um, and get back to, maybe that'll be something we put on our agenda at some point, but, um, I'm not prepared to do it right now. But maybe I could check with Jim about that. Okay, and that was just a couple of, um, comments. About any other, um, city council announcements or reports? All right. Not hearing any. Good and welfare. Yes, Jerry?
I just wanted to put out that Sober Grad is starting to sell tickets, uh, for a fundraiser fight dinner. They, they got out, so you'll see, uh, those tickets out there. I think, uh, Katz Meow may be selling them too, and some folks out there, so that's out there. I think because of the conflicting orders, uh, not conflicting, but because of the ever-changing, uh, orders, everything's kind of pushing forward as if there may be some sort of Sober Grad event, but, you know, hearing just in case. I've been reaching out, you know, different folks regarding possible venues and, like, the tail, so I just wanted to fill that up.
Thank you.
And despite the uptick in traffic, uh, in town, I'm pretty excited about the return to in-person education.
Great. Any other good and welfare? I don't see any. We do not have a closed session tonight, which means that I think that, uh, approximately 7:35, I am going to declare that this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.